Good ceremony, so is there an invocation for today? We're gonna start Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I did see an invocation for today. Does anybody know?
No, I don't see one on there. I think I have to set a new schedule.
All right, well, we'll hold off on that. So, Bonnie, can you roll call, please?
Walter?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Morris?
Here.
McAllister?
Here.
Henchel?
I'm here.
Glenn?
Here.
Andrews?
Here.
Commissioner Spence is here, she's just having some technical difficulty. And Chairman Seifert?
Here.
All right, so we're gonna move right along with approval in minutes.
So moved?
Second.
All right.
January 8th organizational meeting and regular meeting minutes.
Correct.
As presented.
Second was a motion by Andrews and second by Flynn. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to first public comment. Bonnie, if you please.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the board may state his or her name and township or district, providing a specific address is not recommended. Persons may address the board on matters or issues which are relevant and germane to county government, as determined by the chairperson. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may, at his or her discretion, allow an additional opportunity or time to speak if determined germane and necessary to the discussion. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment may be received during the meeting when a specific agenda topic is scheduled for discussion by the board. Prior to the first public comment, the chairperson will indicate the topics on the agenda for which public comment will be accepted. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized, and shall not address the board until called upon by the chairperson. The board shall not comment or respond to a person who is addressing the board. Silence or non-response from the board should not be interpreted as disinterest or disagreement by the board. Please be respectful and refrain from personal or political attacks.
Good morning. I'm Bruce Moore, and I live in East Bay Township in Commissioner Henchel's district. At the recent airport social event, the airport administrator asked me a hypothetical question and said that if the county had a borrowing plan, which it doesn't, but if the county had a borrowing plan, and at the last increment of that plan, the airport, even adding the airport to it, it would not change the bond rating for the county, would I then support the county taking on the credit risk for the airport's bonds? After a great deal of consideration, I've concluded that I would not, for the simple reason that in the economic conditions where the airport were to be at risk of default, that would also be economic conditions where the county would be under a lot of stress. The administrator has said that a default by the airport would never happen. In my experience during the financial crisis, that was a guarantee that bad things would happen. I don't, three years ago, if you were to ask anyone who lived in Isabella County, would they fire all of their sheriff's deputies? Everyone would have said that will never happen, and yet Isabella County is faced with exactly that situation. So even if the airport bonds don't change the bond rating, when the county develops a plan, I still would not support the county taking on the credit risk for the airport. In the similar vein of risk of things, unpleasant things happening, I've been reading in the newspaper about all of the, the opening of the Mental Health Crisis Center that was sponsored by an ARPA grant from the county. And the question that comes to mind is that if Munson were to merge with another hospital chain, and all of the current executives were to take buyouts or get laid off, are there protections in the contract that require that acquiring entity to continue to provide the same kinds of services in the facility where the $5 million county grant was given? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bruce.
Justin Reed. So this morning, I was looking at something, and it kinda caught my eye. And so it caught my eye because I cannot make assertions or assumptions, because that's wrong. But however, I did say this last meeting, and I'll say this again, is that the governance model and bylaws have been updated on CMH's website, but that is a remedy that will probably be figured out. And also is, since I can't make assumptions or any kind of accusations, because I know in the one minute for the Board of Directors was comment about the committees, and on how those committees' membership would be asked of the counties. Currently, there are 16 board members that are appointed there through county, and that makeup is the consumers, which is two-thirds, and also the professionals. So if the, if CMH or the Board of Directors decided to say, hey, listen, we want more people on our committees, the board, the counties cannot just go ahead and say, oh, we're just gonna appoint more people to the Board of Directors, more or less like cherry picking, just like how Beta was, and how Beta had two county commissioners on the same Board of Directors. So the, so since Penny Morris is a representative of that Board of Directors, she is the only one that can be talked to, because she is representative of Grand Travers County on the Board of Directors. There are other members that are representative of Grand Travers County on the Board of Directors for CMH, however, they don't have the contact information out there. The only person that I, that, you know, unfortunately Penny is not in my district, she is not. So however, since it is a state law, that she is, the appointment is hers until she gets re-elected or resigns, or one of the two, I'm still gonna have to deal with that. So I'm a member of the public, and I will try, I'm trying to make this very, the right words. So, thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Dave McGrahm, Bay Meadows Drive, Garfield Township. I've been in front of this board a few times as chair of the prior opioid epidemic task force. I was last here, I believe, in September, and the work of the task force ended in June with a strategic plan, a draft budget, and priorities for spending. I was under the impression that there was going to be a study session after the election and after new chairs were appointed and other committees appointed. I have not heard back on that, but I noted today in the agenda that there is a work group to be formed to discuss the process on how to spend the opioid and marijuana money. Since this fall, I've been asked in a variety of my roles as part of the county Drug Free Coalition, and as part of a 25-county collaborative, what's the status of the opioid settlement dollars in Grand Travers County? And my consistent response is there's gonna be a study session, probably sometime in January or February. Again, I'm not seeing that anywhere listed in the future, but I see this new work group. I'm not exactly sure how this work group ties into all the work that the task force did. I will share with you that regarding a process, much of that legwork has already been done. There have been a lot of discussions about next steps. The task force work is done, but the settlement dollar work is really only beginning. But there are a lot of people interested in continuing to promote that work and be involved with it, myself included. I have been in touch, in my role as the medical director of a 25-county collaborative, I've been in touch with many of those counties on a variety of committees. We talk frequently about what's going on in our individual counties regarding opioid settlement dollars, and everybody's kind of in the thick of trying to figure out how to do this, but there are best practices out there, as promoted by the Michigan Association of Counties and some national organizations as well, and we're becoming more and more familiar with those best practices. They're really involving a lot of the work that was already done with looking at gaps, getting community input, coming up with a budget, and figuring out a process for moving those dollars out into the community. I note that on this work group, there aren't any members of the prior task force, and I would respectfully ask that I be considered to be part of that ongoing work group, and perhaps some other members of the task force as well, because we really wanna keep moving this work forward. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning. John Disbelder, Peninsula Township. I'm here to address an issue that's both urgent and crucial for the future of the county, and that's the need for a new jail. Our current facility is woefully outdated, it no longer meets the needs of the community. Dating back to the 60s, the jail simply is, doesn't align with the realities of today. In the past 60 years, our county has had tremendous growth, there's been significant changes in how we view and address mental health and corrections. The closing of the state hospital decades ago left a significant gap in care for individuals with mental health conditions, and that gap has contributed to the increasing number of people with mental health and substance abuse challenges entering the criminal justice system. But the jail facility we have today is not equipped to address those issues. Our correction officers are doing their best, but the design of the current facility severely limits their ability to prevent suicides and provide the proper care for inmates, especially those with mental health conditions. Moreover, our jails simply cannot accommodate the kinds of services needed to reduce recidivism and prepare individuals for reintegration into the community. There's no room for onsite counseling, training programs, or the critical services that could help reduce the cycle of incarceration. Things like exercise, recreation, substance abuse counseling, and vocational training, all of which are known to be effective in reducing reoffending, simply don't fit in the jail. A year ago, Travers Indivisible hosted a series of community discussions on the intersection of law enforcement and mental health. These were productive conversations, bringing together county residents, law enforcement leaders, mental health professionals, substance abuse providers, and those who work directly with individuals in the jail. There was universal agreement that the current jail is far beyond its useful life and desperately needs to be replaced. I'm heartened by the work of Sheriff Mike Shea and Tom Busamra of BDAI in sparking the public discussion on the issue, but we've also seen foot dragging from past county boards. There's been resistance to planning and a lack of imagination in terms of solutions. I believe we now have a board that's ready to lead, and I ask you to take decisive action, begin working with community stakeholders to actively plan for a new jail facility, and just as importantly, engage the public in this conversation. It's crucial that the residents of Grand Travers County understand the urgent need for a modern facility that prioritizes both community safety and the rehabilitation of those incarcerated. Ultimately, this isn't just about bricks and mortar. A new jail is about creating a space where we can offer real opportunities for rehabilitation, reduce recidivism, and support individuals as they transition back into society as contributing members. It's about improving safety, not just for people who are incarcerated, but for all of us in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carlton Ketchum, Traverse City. I'm here to speak about the Mental Wellness Center. I'm very encouraged that there's going to be a presentation today. I'm encouraged to see that there are board members, that there are citizen advocates. I appreciate Mr. Moore's comments about this. As we're seeing this develop, I want to remind everybody that with the Mental Wellness Center, that failure is not an option. This is a tough job. I think the contingencies raised by Mr. Moore are important, there are others to consider, but failure is not an option. And I ask everyone here who's part of Munson, part of Northern Lakes, part of the community, the commission board, to keep that in mind. There's a tremendous need. It dovetails with what was just said about the new jail. There's a confluence that needs to be taken into consideration. I did tour the new facility, it is fantastic. I met with a number of the staff people there, they are amazing, they have a mission, and that is very encouraging. But we've gotta look ahead. I'm reminded there's a saying, some Zen saying about, you know, when the monk points to the moon, the fool looks at the monk's finger. Let's look at the moon, let's, you know, keep building towards that, because this is something that can really make our county, our region excellent. I have experience with medical centers of excellence, that's a technical term. I think this area could become a center of excellence for rural behavioral health care. It's a heavy lift, you know what I'm talking about. It's a heavy lift, but we've got a lot of smart people in this community, so let's all work together with, you know, excellence in mind, not expedience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. I am once again being a fool, trying to believe we have a government by the people. I'm David Petrovinterlaken. I realize it is always the few who control real power, legal power, economic power, police and military power, the few that protect the privileged class and maintain their special authority over the less fortunate. This week, the top political issue was about a bipartisan decision with the blessing of the DNR to basically give almost 400 acres of state land to a foreign company to manufacture and test military weapons at Camp Grayling. One of the neighboring residents expressed worries that, quote, "We're very concerned that this is just another step forward in the militarization of Michigan." Of course, there has been no outrage expressed by their northern Michigan political neighbors, especially from Grand Travers, the most populous county in the north. It seems there are less important matters to object to. But only about a week ago, there was a loud and unified objection about the same Michigan DNR considering a proposal to lease almost 400 acres to a U.S. company for solar panels. Were these representatives, the elites, somehow concerned that this would be another step forward in the solarization of Michigan? Of course, it was only a few months prior to that, when the Michigan DNR agreed to a 52,000-acre expansion of Camp Grayling, which was considered a compromise from their original proposal. So they must not be concerned about the amount of land involved, because 52,000 acres is more than 100 times 400 acres. So you could see how foolishly I come to think that commissioners and congressmen should give priority to promoting peace and growing a better world. Please be a fool and stand up to the powers above you when they're leading to our destruction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Saying none, we'll move on. Some look for approval of the agenda?
They're moved.
But... So it was Flynn, I believe, moved, and Commissioner Henchel supported. Any additions, revisions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sweet, here we go. Consent calendar, if you please.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive, file, or approval, is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar.
Thank you, Bonnie.
A, receive, number one.
All right.
Expenditure report. Number two, ARPA status report. B, approvals. Number one, ARPA funding reimbursement request. Now I'm done.
Now you're done, thank you. Anybody want to remove anything from the consent calendar? I'll write that down. Motion to approve, as presented.
You gotta ask the public if they want to remove.
Oh, my apologies. Here we go.
Mr. Chairman, historically, we've done that, public comment is the public's opportunity to request things removed, or they can pass a note to the clerk as public comment rule states. So I've never, at one point, we tried offering that to the public, and it became disruptive to the meeting, so we asked that that be done in public comment historically.
Thank you.
Your meeting run how you want.
No, I like, I like that idea. Thanks, Rob. Appreciate that. So, seeing none of that, so nobody wants to remove anything? Who made the motion to approve? Somebody? Anybody?
Lauren.
I did.
Lauren did?
Oh, no, I didn't make, no, no one has, but I'll make the motion.
Okay, thanks, Lauren.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Housler. Motion made by Mr. Flynn, second by Ms. Housler, approve as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Roll call vote.
Sorry. Roll call vote.
Spence?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes.
Motion carries. All those opposed? Oh, wait, we did roll call, my apologies. I'm sorry, I'm two steps ahead. I'm really sorry, I'm looking at something else, we're trying to get something fixed in our agenda. My apologies, task at hand. So we're gonna go to 7A, Special Orders of Business.
Good morning, Commissioners. At a previous meeting, I believe in November or December, it was requested that Munson come to the Board of Commissioners to present an update on the Wellness Center, and with us today is Laura Glenn, the COO of Munson, to do just that. And I do have a presentation that she has provided, so I will work on getting that.
All right, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to be here today. Also, really appreciate Brian Martinez, NRM CEO for Northern Lakes. He is here with me, and certainly either of us at the end of my presentation are available to take questions, and really just wanna acknowledge the strong partnership with Northern Lakes and the tremendous support of the county. And we've reached another major milestone in the development of the Crisis and Access Center, and so I will give an update on where we stand in the development of the center today. Next slide, please. I wanna just kind of re-ground in what we're trying to accomplish through the center. So our vision has been and continues to be that the center really be a safe and welcoming place, that individuals who are experiencing a behavioral health crisis are able to receive care and be connected with the right resources within the community to continue their care. Our goal, our vision, is that we will be open 24/7/365, and ultimately reduce the need for inpatient psychiatric beds and reduce the strain on the jails within the region. Next slide. We've used this graphic, because I think it tells the picture very well, and it's kind of where the Crisis Center fits within a continuum of crisis services. So as many of you are aware, we do have a crisis line within our community, we have mobile crisis teams that exist. What we have established now is this crisis facility, so kind of the place to go for care if you're experiencing a crisis, again, with our goal to successfully discharge patients to the community to receive continuing care. Next slide. So once we are fully operational, again, we will be 24/7/365, serving both the kind of pediatric youth population as well as the adult population, regardless of insurance status or ability to pay, we'll have behavioral health and nursing care, psychiatric urgent care, a living room, peer services, and I'm gonna walk through today, we're implementing these in a phased way, and I really appreciated the comments on making sure that we're doing this with excellence in mind, which is part of the reason we are phasing the services. And so I'll walk through how we are going to be phasing in these services over the course of the next several quarters. Next slide. So the good news, the exciting news, is that we launched Phase 1 on Sunday, January 5th, so we opened the center. Phase 1, you can see the listing of services there, which includes the welcoming center and face-to-face crisis intervention, as well as referral for outpatient and peer support services. We are open 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, and that is based on kind of when the busiest times are that we experience, both in the emergency department as well as within Northern Lakes. So again, that's Phase 1. Phase 2, you can see, we will be opening the living room, and I'll show you a picture of that, as well as launching the psychiatric urgent care. We are targeting Phase 2 to launch July 1st, and again, that's when we get to 24/7 services, so that is a big step from our five days a week, 12 hours a day, to 24/7/365, and incorporating those additional services. Also, in the summer, we will be opening the adult crisis residential unit, which will have nine beds. The timing of that, you can see we're saying summer, is somewhat gonna be dependent on licensure, so that is a licensed service, and so there are some aspects of that licensing timeline that are a little bit out of our control. And then Phase 4 is when we will open in the lower level, the crisis residential unit for pediatrics, which will have six beds. We're targeting fall, but that also has some licensing requirements that will ultimately dictate the timeline. So the good news is that with Phase 1, again, that we opened on the 5th, so as of last Thursday, we completed our first full week of operation, we saw 11 patients, the age range was between 20 and 73, so a broad demographic age range in the community, and seven of those 11 patients came from Grand Travers County, and the county that was kind of next most representative was Benzy County, which had two patients. And we've got a lot of questions about, and I'll talk a little bit about long-term sustainability, because I agree with the comment that this can't fail. We had, a little over half of those patients were Medicaid, the other were commercially insured, and that has been kind of part of our, part of our kind of business model or plan for long-term sustainability, is ensuring we can serve both Medicaid population, but also bill commercial insurance for the services that we provide in the center. Next slide. So this gets a little bit more to sustainability. Again, really just wanna thank all of you in the county for the support in ARPA funds. We also received a $10 million, I'm sorry, a $5 million grant for, from the state of Michigan for pediatric services within the building, and so the lower level that is gonna become that pediatric crisis residential unit is not being funded through ARPA funds, instead it's being funded through those funds from the state of Michigan. And so in total, we have $10 million of grant support to launch the program. So again, very grateful for the support. So again, very grateful for the support, both of the county and at the state level.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Is that, so there was a licensing from a state issue with the child, children being so close to other, is that being, has it been fixed, or is it still in process?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we are in the process of still resolving that. I will say, we had Director Hertel from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services come and visit and see the space, and so we are actively working with her team at the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services to resolve that issue. What I would say is that the regulations that we're trying to work within were written long before the concept of Crisis Residential Units existed. So I think there's a strong willingness that they understand the problem we're trying to solve in the community and a willingness to work with us to figure out how we can appropriately do that. So we actually have some folks coming on site later this month, and again, I'm very optimistic that we'll be able to work through that.
Thank you for allowing me to interrupt.
Yep, no, great question, though. So in addition to the initial investment support that we've received through grants, I mentioned the fact that in our first week, we saw a mix of both Medicaid and commercially insured patients. And so part of the ongoing financial sustainability is, you know, billing insurance carriers for the appropriate services that are provided in that location. Obviously, if a patient does not have insurance, we'll still provide services regardless of ability to pay. We do that on a regular basis within our emergency department and many of our other sites of care within the community, and we do see a role for foundation support or philanthropy on an ongoing basis, which has been consistent with how we deliver behavioral health services or mental health services within our organization over time. We also know that, and have had strong community support, and are looking for continued opportunities for our community partners to be part of this. So just to maybe simplify this, funding for behavioral health is really complicated. Reimbursement, even from commercial insurers, doesn't always cover the cost of delivering care, so we know that long-term, we will need a mix of funding, a mix of grants, philanthropy funding, as well as that reimbursement from commercial and governmental payers. And so we are committed to ensuring the long-term success and sustainability of the program. Next slide. So I know we've had a couple of open houses and we've done lots of tours, so many of you have already had a chance to see the Crisis and Access Center, but this just shows you kind of where it's located on Munson Medical Center's campus. So you can see Medical Campus Drive, so think of it as we are kind of, ooh, I'm going to get my northwest, north, southeast, and west confused. I think we are on the west side of campus. Next slide. This is the front entrance to the center. I'm also going to show you, we have a separate entrance for law enforcement that I'll show you in a moment. Next slide. Thank you. This is the waiting area, but our goal is to ensure that we are not having patients wait. This really may be more for family members who are with patients who are seeking care. Next slide. This is our front office area, and one of the members of our team, and this was before opening just a couple weeks ago. Next slide. So what you will see kind of in the bottom right-hand corner, that is the separate entrance for law enforcement. We have a separate drive there. And then what you'll see in the upper left is, we have a, we have a security office that is kind of, that is located in between the law enforcement entrance and the main entrance. And so we have 24/7 security presence in the building and have some other technology in place in the building to ensure both patient and staff safety throughout the building. Next slide. So this is probably my favorite room in the building. This is our, I talked about the living room model. We have a separate living room for youth and for adults. This is our youth living room, really is a very calming, beautiful space. Next slide. This is part of the living room for adults. Again, similar, trying to make it a very soothing and welcoming space. Next slide. So I want to also provide an update on the budget and the kind of original budget that was submitted with the ARPA grants and in the ARPA grants agreement, where we are at very transparently in spending those funds and what we anticipate as we plan for the additional phases of the project. So as you may recall, the budget included relocating the behavioral health services that we were providing in that Brook Street building, that was our outpatient behavioral health center. Those services moved to Copper Ridge, and we were right around, essentially just under budget with that project. Then the next component of the budget was the renovations to the main level of the Brook Street building, which you just saw the outcome of those renovations. It looks beautiful, really is a great welcoming space. As of right now, we're slightly under budget, but we are still anticipating over the next couple of months, we'll have invoices from the project that we'll be receiving. So at this point, we are anticipating being right on that about $3.5 million construction budget. Then in the original grant request and grant agreement, we had planned an additional half million dollars to build out the lower level of the Brook Street building. We, as I mentioned, received the $5 million funding through the state of Michigan for the pediatric services that will be offered on a lower level. So instead of funding that out of the ARPA grant, we will be funding that out of the grants from the state of Michigan, and appreciate the partnership with the county and the support. Working with Mr. Alger, we requested that those dollars be repurposed to support the operational startup of the psychiatric urgent care, which again is in Phase Two, which will be opening in July. So while we have not expended any of those funds yet, they will be used essentially to launch operations, because just like I mentioned, we had 11 patients last week. We anticipate that those volumes will ramp up slowly, leaving a gap between the revenue received for that care and the operational expenses of opening the urgent care. Then if we move on to the other operational costs that were in the budget, you want to go back? Thank you. We had, we still have $400,000 in there for staff recruitment. Remember, we are going to be staffing up to get to 24/7, so that requires a pretty significant increase in staffing, as well as recruiting providers and staff for the urgent care and the Crisis Residential Units. So we have not had to tap into those dollars yet. We very much anticipate that we will, with our goal to be recruiting net new talent into our region, so that we're not negatively impacting any other community partners. We also, now that we are open, plan to start to spend some of the dollars that we have for community outreach and engagement, and this is really ensuring awareness within the community, so that individuals who need care know where to go and can access services. And then we are right on budget for project management. Next slide. So, thank you, and certainly happy to answer any questions, as is Brian.
Commissioner Walter.
Yeah, thanks for being here. Thanks for the update. I think I might have requested it back a couple months ago, just so we could hear good stuff going on over there. Question about those folks who have come already, are you tracking where they're coming from or how they're being referred to, and are you able to share that?
So we are tracking. I will say right now, the tracking is very manual. So we have the county of residence, and we are tracking kind of how they're coming to us, whether they're walking in or law enforcement. We have not yet been tracking referrals, but we are planning to do so as we're able to more automate that data tracking. So we have gotten lots of requests for data, so we know that we, we need to have lots of data to provide so that we can answer all of those questions. So, but again, right now, very much manual.
Mr. Andrews.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions related to the relationship between Munson and Northern Lakes. When we originally approved this, it was to Northern Lakes. Northern Lakes is a public body. We can see their minutes, we can attend their meetings, and we can review the packets. And then we switched it to Munson, and obviously Munson is not a public body, public is not invited to Munson decision-making meetings. So I am interested to have some understanding to the point that was made, both in public comment and by yourself, to make sure that this project doesn't fail. How do we, as a Board of Commissioners, have a understanding of the arrangements between Northern Lakes and Munson? And I can, just to be specific, there appear to be facilities arrangements. The Munson is the owner of the building. I assume it's renting the facility back to Northern Lakes. What are the terms of those? Does, does this board, you know, what is the Northern Lakes' ability to, to ensure that that is sustainable? And then there's also an operational aspect component, who to hire, how much to pay them, who do they work for, types of questions. And then relatedly, there's a revenue split, right? So the revenues that come in, 11 people, I'm not sure how much that revenue is, it's undoubtedly not enough to cover the cost. So how are those, I don't need, we don't need to know the details, but we need to know that the public knows those details, right? Because those are matters that affect the long-term sustainability. So is all of that subject to the Northern Lakes Board approval and, and public, so that we can all see that information and get updates on that through them, or how, if not that way, then how?
So, great question. Maybe, let me just kind of, I'll take that in chunks, and certainly, Brian, you can jump in and, and add commentary. So first, what, what is the relationship between Munson and Northern Lakes? We right now have two agreements in place with Northern Lakes. One is an operating agreement, which basically says how we're going to work together and our commitment, basically, to make the center successful. So how we're going to make decisions together and how we're going to ensure that we have, you know, long-term viability in the center. So that's the operating agreement. The operating agreement also has incorporated into it a shared staffing agreement, which we've actually had a long-term shared staffing agreement with Northern Lakes for Crisis Team members in our emergency department. And so, so what that staffing agreement just basically says is it allows us to share staff and lease staff back and forth, because part of the reason we want to partner to do this is so we can be really efficient in our resources and be good stewards of our resources to the community. So that's agreement number one. Agreement number two is the lease between Munson and Northern Lakes for the spaces that Northern Lakes is occupying, and that lease was approved by the Board of Northern Lakes. I can let Brian comment on that. I would say, we are also providing services to Northern Lakes, like environmental services and security services, again, so we can be really efficient with resources in that building. So those are the two legal agreements. And from a, from a financial perspective, what we have attempted to do to try to simplify what could become very complex is have different components of the services delivered in the building, delivered by either Northern Lakes or Munson, so that it's really clear who's billing for the services. We can account the direct expenses to those services and be able to have very clean financial statements for the services within the building. Brian, anything that you want to add to that?
As far as our staffing from Northern Lakes, we staffed it. We built it into the budget. That was approved by the Board, Northern Lakes Board, back in October. And that was also included within the budget, our lease agreement for the project and, and the distributing of when we're going to build into the budget, start operating 24 hours. Also, the EVS services, everything that's included, so we're not paying separate subcontracts. It was all lumped into one lease agreement, and it's a shared lease agreement between Munson and, and Northern Lakes for the, for the facilities, to include heat, snow removal, all the, the things that people don't think about when, when putting the project list together. But built into that, it's, is a, I think, a 3% bump each year as the cost of living goes up within that, within that lease agreement. So that is something that we negotiated, and we looked at the spacing, and we looked at the facilities and what we're going to be using, what we're going to be sharing. And we, we're also working on a contract right now to, to provide all the screenings as well as access to. And so that, that's shared staffing. I'm learning more about shared staffing, billable services, how we can bill private insurance, commercial insurance, and also fit that into what we're doing, so.
And I would just add, I think part of the, the value of the partnership between Munson and Northern Lakes is there's things that Northern Lakes is expert in and knows really well, and there's things that, you know, Munson Healthcare is expert in and knows really well. And so we're, I, I think this is a, a very unique partnership in ensuring that all of that is invisible to the patients coming in the door, so that everyone can receive care, and so that we're handling kind of the behind-the-scenes, making sure that commercial insurance is billed, because that's typically been within our wheelhouse, as opposed to Northern Lakes.
Brian, introduce yourself to the world, please.
I'm Brian Martinez, NRM CEO, Northern Lakes Community and Mental Health.
Thank you. Commissioner McAllister, did I answer your question?
Most of them, thank you, stole my thunder. But I did want to know about the transparency on what's going on, so the public knows and we know what, what's going on there. So I don't know if that's a thing for us. And how much staffing will it take to make the place 24/7?
Currently, we, we are in the process of offering our last.
Brian, could you use the mic, please?
Sorry. We, we just, we just interviewed our last staff that we're hiring into the position, a position that has been budgeted for the, for the project, and we should be making the offer to that individual to come on. We, we decided to roll it out as a group and, and hit goals, just so we can see the volume, work out some of the kinks before we go 24/7. We're talking about tracking and, and getting data. We have to build something into our system and our NOLA system to actually track numbers and data. That, that is a combined effort with our IT departments, so it's working in two different, what, EMRs and, and electronic medical records and trying to combine those, so we can actually get billable services and how we're going to bill home coding, build that into the system for that data to be tracked. So it's been a project between IT departments, different computer systems that we work on, and, and linking those up in order to provide those services and, and get that data and get the, the numbers for billable services. It's, it's kind of, we're, we're, take one step forward, two steps back sometimes, but it's getting worked out the kinks, and that's one of the reasons why we couldn't go 24 hours right up front. We, we just want to make sure it's rolled out correctly and that our numbers will support what we're doing and that we have those things in place and the kinks worked out before we can actually get it up and running 24 hours, so.
Yeah, and I would say we've, our, Michael Corby, if you've met him, is the director of the center. He's fantastic. Talk about someone who's really passionate about this work. He, you know, has a whole staffing plan as far as what types of staff and kind of how many full-time equivalents he needs to go 24/7. So I feel really confident we've got the staffing plan, and it's incorporated in, in Northern Lakes' budget. Now, to, to answer your question specifically about transparency and how does the community know, so we have our, the, we have a community advisory group that has been engaged in supporting this work, really, for many years. And so one of the next level, the next phases of our work with the community advisory group is aligning on what metrics do people want to see, and how do we make sure that we are, you know, we're, we're tracking a lot of stuff manually. As Brian said, we're building a lot of tracking with, into our various kind of electronic systems, so that we can automate that. But we're very open to being transparent with, you know, with those metrics, again, really working with that community advisory group to make sure that we're tracking the right things and reporting the right things. We also, the, the leadership team that we have with Northern Lakes, Munson, and kind of other community partners, like the Shire, we meet monthly, and, you know, we have summaries of those meetings that we have, that we've shared with the community advisory group. I, I think we're, we're happy to, to be fully transparent in this work. I think some of what we need, you know, the help of the community advisory group and the county to understand what do you want to see, so that we can, can, can make sure that we're meeting your needs and answering your questions.
Can I, can I follow that up with one thing?
Please.
I had, I had a few phone calls, and they're just wondering where your I had a few phone calls, and they were just wondering where your project was, like, before Christmas. They had no idea when you're opening. Are you on time? Are you on budget? They didn't see anything in the paper, the ticker, that kind of stuff, so. And I don't know where they look for their stuff or don't look for it, but they were looking for information and couldn't seem to find it.
Well, I would say that...
Whether it's out there or not.
Yeah, I did more interviews than I can count in the month of December, really trying to put that information out there and be transparent. And so, again, happy to adjust, so that we're putting out the information that our, you know, community wants to see.
Awesome, thank you.
Commissioner Spence.
Yeah, thank you. This is a really good, comprehensive presentation. I just want to know a little bit more about who makes up your community advisory group? What kind of stakeholders are they? Who, how many are there? Where do they come from?
So I think we have about 20. I'm trying to remember the final numbers. So if we go back in time with the project, there was a part of the Shire's Behavioral Health Initiative, there was a crisis work group that was comprised of individuals from Munson, Northern Lakes, and community advocates. And so we've really tried to transition many of those community members into the community advisory group. We've kind of restructured the project, and that was done a couple of, really, probably about 18 months ago. And so, you know, we have representatives from NAMI, from, I'm trying to just remember some of the other...
ATS.
ATS. So...
Agreement Services.
Yep, so different community partners that have really been engaged in this project from the beginning, and others that have, you know, vocalized an interest in being part of this. So we've not, we've tried to not be exclusive, but be inclusive and make sure that the community groups that have an interest in this center succeeding, that they can be part of that. So if there are, you know, groups that aren't yet represented that would like to, I'd be happy to speak with individuals who have a desire to participate.
Commissioner Andrews.
Thank you. On the operational timeline, it indicates 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM in the current phase. Crisis phone screening, mobile crisis service screenings or services. It's my understanding that those are not 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, right? They're available 24/7?
That is correct. We provide those services along with mobile crisis services for the community across the six counties. And we also have a protocol contract that does the access screenings for us. We actually have people that Northern Lakes employs that will do those after hours to meet the needs of the community, whether it be meet them in a hospital setting, a community setting with policing, or just in general. That's something that Northern Lakes covers.
So that is physically housed in the center or not physically housed in the center?
So from 8:00 to 8:00, we physically house individuals at this point to do the work that they're doing for the community. After 8:00 at night, we have, within our bargaining agreement with the union, crisis on-call. So we actually have staff that are assigned the crisis on-call staffing phone, and they are the ones that meet the needs of the community when a crisis comes up and they're called with our mobile crisis team.
And can you just elaborate? The mobile crisis team, is that a physical struck, is that just individuals who are on-call, ready to respond? And so they may be dispersed throughout the community?
Yeah, and a lot of it is partnership with our local law enforcement throughout our six counties, because this is just not a Grand Traverse County thing. This is six counties that we do mobile crisis across within our catchment area in Northern Lakes. So we actually have law enforcement, a lot of them have tablets in their vehicle if there's a crisis. Let's just say Ross Common County, I'll throw it out there. Their sheriff or police department can actually get a hold of our mobile crisis, and we can send somebody regional within that area to go meet that crisis in that community. So it's the same thing in Grand Traverse County, same thing in Wexford County, same thing in Mesaki County. We're just housing our mobile crisis team within the center now to utilize it in a different capacity, to meet the needs of the community, but also a bigger capacity too, so.
And then my last request on the, what are the benefits of an effective crisis services continuum? The third slide in the presentation has some statistics on crisis lines, mobile services, crisis facilities. It is my expectation that that is statewide, nationwide, it's not local.
Yeah, that's, it's nationwide published data, but we will, part of what we will be tracking is the disposition of those patients from the crisis center to see how we mirror up to that.
Good, and that was just my request, because ultimately, one of the key goals here is reducing the strain on jails, and coming up with a metric that allows us, that's one of the benefits, right? The public benefit of this project is ultimately, hopefully, a little reduction in spending somewhere else, and to the extent that can be verified, right, that that is in fact happening, it would be useful for this board, I think, to have that, access to that data.
Any further questions? Thank you very much for your time today and your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman Seifert?
Yes, ma'am.
It was brought to my attention that page two is missing from some of the agenda packets. I have page two. I'll bring it out here if anybody needs a copy of page two.
Two.
Ours doesn't show where the page break is.
Just the ones in the box outside here.
Moving on. Oh, let's see, Departmental Items 9A.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you. Apparently, there's been a mix-up with the packet version of this. It contained two leases for 500 West Front Street instead of 851 Woodmere. That has been corrected. I don't know if you all have that in front of you, but certainly willing to hear recommendations on how to proceed with this item. Background, we've been involved with...
Can we stop a second and confirm? Because in my packet, it still says 500 when I click on the 851.
Do you refresh while it's open? It might update.
Or...
I have refreshed.
I rebooted and that didn't work, but then I refreshed when it was open.
Yeah, something's wrong with the software. When I was in the split-screen version of this, it was not allowing me to view the packet or the item, but I got out of split-screen and it's working, so.
Are we looking at 520 West Front Street?
Technically, it's 500.
I think you've provided enough information in the summary and in the memo and in the background material and in the table that explains the arrangement that I think we should at least have this discussion...
Thank you, Commissioner. So we've had this relationship since 1984 with the city of Traverse City. Where the jail is currently, that used to be the city police department and the sheriff's office. We, the sheriff's office, and the city police moved to its current location on Woodmere to accommodate a jail expansion in the early 2000s. Since then, we've had this relationship with the city where we, the county, were supposed to ultimately own both 520 West Front Street and 851 Woodmere. The previous administrations, for whatever reason, whether it was an oversight, whether it was a misstep, which I consider very easily see happening with long-term agreements, they did not fully execute what was supposed to occur back in the 90s and the 2000s. So what we have is essentially useless leases. We were supposed to exchange deeds where the county ultimately would be the recorded owner of both parcels. It didn't happen, so here we are. We have met with Cole Stoker, specifically Don Kohanek and Matt Nordshor to talk about these leases for the last year, along with Lauren Tribbleauk and Nate Geinzer, and now Liz Vogel as the new city manager, and we have worked out two lease agreements that essentially splits the baby. And the newly defined need within the last two years by the city fire department to have more space at the current location at Front Street now puts us into motion to vacate that property by the end of 2026. What you will see in the leases is once, so we will pay no rent for the 520 West Front Street location, the city will not pay rent at the 851 Woodmere location, and once the county vacates the Front Street location, on or before December 31st, 2026, the city will start paying rent for 851 Woodmere in the amount of about $105,000. That is an amount agreed upon by city and county administration due to a fair market value assessment of the space. So with that, we are on a timeline to vacate 520 West Front Street by December 31st, 2026. Jennifer Berkey, the department head of MSUE, has been in conversations with the city fire department and city administration, and the map that you see on that agreement is something that she is good with. And we are working with Jennifer currently to try to identify locations within this building and elsewhere to house MSUE at the end of 2026. So any questions about, for me, about that? I've provided the history of this, it goes, it dates back, but here we are, and we're ready to go.
Questions?
Just a point of clarification. You said if we, on or before the date, you mentioned the December 31st, 2026, I think, then the city will start paying rent. But if we vacate earlier, does that affect it, or will the city start paying rent at that time?
Yes, Commissioner Walter, that is correct. Once we vacate 520 West Front Street, that triggers the city to pay rent for consideration of the lease.
So if we were to leave quite a bit earlier and find space for them, they would start paying rent earlier?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, just confirming that approach.
Any other questions?
Do you have a, I'm sorry, do you have a projected time to get out? Are you on a timeline to...
We do not. We have had several opportunities to look at different spaces for the MSUE, and Jennifer is also working to that end, looking for space at, just an example, the University Center on Cass Road, NMC, and, but we're confident that we will locate something. We do have a previous markup of the basement where the MSUE is housed in the basement of the governmental center. There are advantages and disadvantages to that. One of the disadvantages to that setup is the city owns a portion of the basement, so we would have to have city involvement and approval of that remodel.
In order to move, you're just looking for a relocation of our MSU then?
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
For the, to get out, you're looking for the MSU relocation, someplace for them to land in?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm making you go last. Anybody else? All right, Commissioner Andrews.
Sorry, just a point of clarification. I'm looking at the law enforcement center lease agreement. I don't know if everybody was able to get a copy of it.
No, it's still not popping up.
One moment.
So, well, I can ask the clarifying question, but this may require further, yeah, maybe you can do that. On page 13 of 60, it says the rent, I'm looking at the rent paragraph, and it basically, it says that once, you know, consistent with what you said, once we leave Front Street, the city's going to pay rent, and it says in the amount of $8 per square foot of city space. And to my knowledge, that's the only rent paragraph in that lease. And then when you look at Exhibit A and it shows you the city space, the city space is the yellow.
First page of the law enforcement lease center agreement, you're almost there.
Almost there, keep going.
You say it says $8?
Yep, that's what the, well, that's not what I say, that's what the lease documents is.
Yeah, I don't mean it, I didn't infer it that way, because mine shows $0.
It's zero until, right? So it's, it shows...
Okay.
And then, and then it's $8, right? So now we see the city space is yellow, and then it says city, county, if you scroll down the key, and I assume this was drafted by the sheriff or the city or combination. So the rest is shared space, right? So we've got a lot of white space that's shared. And then my question, this is a setup, right? The question is on the all-square-feet document that follows. And it looks to me like... Go on. Yep, so it looks like the, this would have us believe that the city is actually paying $8 for half of the shared space. But as I read the lease, it was only the city space that they're paying for, not the shared space.
There's actually two calculations that go with this. The first is the $10 per square foot for city-specific space, and then the $8 per square foot for the shared space.
But the lease says $8 a square foot for city space.
Good catch.
Which is going to be a lot less than $100,000 a year, because the city space is only 2,000, 3,000 square feet, not 10,000 square feet.
Chris and I met with the city manager and the city attorney last week, and we agreed that the $105,000 annually is the amount in combination of the 28, 580 and the 76, 744. So we can adjust the lease information to reflect what the calculation shows, but that is correct.
I mean, I like the table better than the terms. How's that?
We will, they are, they agreed with us last week. I put it in a resolution as such, that it would be $105,000 and change. We will change the lease agreement to reflect what the calculation is.
Commissioner Ransell?
Could we also include elevator for inflation?
My question was escalator clause?
That's a fair question. This doesn't even necessarily begin for two years, essentially.
It should be based on market value, not just inflation.
Well, you could have a set escalator clause, you could have a trigger, but it'd probably be better to have it be a set based on something or just a figure.
And then it, there looks like it needs to be updated to reflect, it was probably drafted in November of 2024 when there was different...
Dates will change.
Change is there, yep.
Any more questions? I have one. In both of these agreements, I see four different addresses listed, 500, 520, 851, 859, so...
They're all wrong. So it's the 500 West Front Street, if you know better than, if you know, please say, is the fire department address, 520 West Front Street is the COA MSUE extension, 859 Woodmere? I have no idea. It's in a field somewhere. We've never referred to the LEC as 859 Woodmere, it's always been 851. It's reflected as such in the records, I don't know where it came from.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I know Cole Stoker is renowned across Michigan for their excellence in municipal law. Do they in fact have a real estate attorney? Because basically, we're getting a brain surgeon's opinion of a heart matter when we're going to municipal lawyers for real estate reviews.
There he comes.
Hey, Matt. Nope.
Yes, we do. The issue with the addresses has to do with the recorded documents. So what we found here is that we've referenced the common address versus what the real estate record reflects. So that is why it is the way that it is stated here. I don't disagree that it is confusing, but this is how they are described in the real estate documents.
Matt, to my pointed question, do you, does Cole Stoker have a real estate attorney on staff?
Yes, several. We have Don Kohanek, who's working on this, who has a history as both a development director and real estate attorney. We also have Tim Peron in our office, who does a tremendous amount of real estate work, and Christian Mullitt. So we have three attorneys who do real estate work and have quite a bit of experience there.
Okay.
What's the timeline on when the city commission is going to look at this?
So we were hoping that the city would actually act first on this, but the city management, they've been busy. So we talked about it last week. We positioned this for you. We now will, I think it was next meeting, they're going to actually act on it. So I would like to work with Lauren... So I would like to work with Lauren Tribblealk and Liz Vogel to change the lease agreement to reflect the changes that we've made today prior to their taking it to the city commission, and we would bring this back to you on the first meeting of February.
Need a motion?
No.
Any more questions?
That's what I was hoping, we would see another iteration of this before, okay, great.
Fantastic, thanks, Nate.
Thank you.
All right, so 9B, Project Alpha Progress update from Cunningham Limp.
Jerry from Cunningham Limp is here to provide you an update.
Morning Commissioners, Jerry Tomtec, Program Manager with Cunningham Limp Construction in Traverse City. We had an active December month. We met with the committee, building committee members. We also had the civil engineer and our partners in architecture work on a conceptual site plan presented to the committee, and we've tweaked that a little bit, and we're expected to review that tomorrow. We've done the final conceptual floor plans for both the EOC 911 and the larger storage facility, and we're going to review that one last time. Our intent is to develop then from those approved plans, our first schematic design budget estimate. We're anticipating that to take about a month. So once we have the final sign-off from the committee members, we'll then work on that plan budget. We've also talked with the committee about some IT-related items. We've done an initial review of that, we'll have a follow-up with that. As a matter of fact, PIA is working with a few of the committee members on that as we speak. We also had the Phase 2 environmental study results back. Everything showed negative for any potential contaminants in the soils. There was a suspicious pile of dirt that's on the property, and we reviewed that, tested it, and reported back negative. So we'll continue to have upcoming meetings with the Project Alpha team members, and it'll include both representatives from PIA and from monument engineers. One point I did want to bring to everybody's attention, we did order title work for that gas line. There's a high-pressure gas line that's buried on the property. It kind of orientates from southwest, I'm sorry, southeast to northwest. We did have the legal descriptions reviewed by monument engineering. There is some discrepancy in the language. We're going to ask DTE to review the proposed site plan before we move forward with it, just so that they know what we've got coming down the pipe, and if they have any issues with it, we'll report back. And we'll continue moving forward with meetings, so I'll answer any questions you might have.
Questions, Commissioner Nelson? Could I ask that from now on, we refer in respect for the dirt pile, just as a dirt pile, as opposed to the suspicious dirt pile? Thank you.
Now that we know it's clear.
Yes, right. Flynn, did you have your hand up?
No.
No. Commissioner Andrews?
I guess my question is when, you indicated that there were conceptual floor plans that are almost final. Is that something we will see, and is that something that requires our approval? It's my understanding, is, I guess that's a question.
Sure, we'd be more than happy to provide that to the commissioners.
So one of the questions that we, I keep raising is the storage building, the size of the storage building, and I understand that that's been something of an issue in flux. And I understand that law enforcement is not planning to use that facility for their storage, they're going to maintain the existing barn, storage?
That's correct.
So then the question, another unknown, at least I think on our board, was is Board of Public Works sharing that space with us?
Well, currently, they're shown on the conceptual drawing. It's approximately 34,000 square foot in size. If they do elect not to take on any of that space in the storage building, we can certainly cut that back. We intend to also separate those budget numbers out, because I know that Chris has met, I think Nate, with the DPW, and they did discuss what was the estimated cost to be. So we'll plan for that to be a separate line item for them then to review.
Correct. I, I would like to comment on that. I, I met with the DPW board, Chris has met with the DPW board, and, you know, they're interested in having a further conversation about it. It is outside the original scope of the central storage facility, but we recognize there's a natural adjacency to have the, the crew next to their administrative offices on Lefrainer. They are housed in the Board of Public Works building. However, I think that it's going to complicate the issue, and, you know, there's, so I, I've had conversation with a couple of commissioners, and I just, if you don't, if this board does not believe that that, that the DPW should move or relocate from their Welch Court location to Lefrainer, we can easily make that adjustment. And Cunningham Limp has assured us, and partners in architecture, has said this is an easy adjustment. It's just a matter of taking their footprint off of the, off of the, the plan. So if this board doesn't want to see that, it would be helpful to know that early, so we can move forward with the planning process without the DPW at that location. And what they would be doing is they would have storage, they have, they have many vehicles, they have a lot of stuff that they use in their day-to-day activities, you know, pumps and this, that, and the other thing that are stored at their Welch Court location. They didn't ask for this, this is something that administration went to them and said, are you, are you interested in being at that location so you can have your staff that actually go out and work on, at the various locations next to your administration? So we are indifferent.
Wait, what, but what did they say? I'm not following.
They, they don't know either.
Okay.
They, their first question is why, of course, and secondly is how are we going to pay for it? Are we going to pay through fees? And the answer to that would be yes, you would. You would pay rent and part of the build-out for the facility through their mechanism of funding through the various townships. So we haven't come to that agreement yet, and when Chris met with them last week, there were just, there were only questions, there was no, no commitment.
Does that mean that Welch Court would go away in that move? Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson? It sounds like maybe the DPW board needs to review and weigh in on this, to get off people.
Didn't they get a chance, multiple chances?
Yes, we, we've asked them to, as Nate indicated. He gave a verbal update December. I provided them with 20-some slide deck, as well as the facility's assessment for the Welch Court building, which does show about 400,000 needed upgrades to address issues with their infrastructure at that building. Also tried to give them an understanding of their operating and maintenance costs for that building, as well as give them brief history of that building. I did tell them, a lot of this, though, is just access the information I have. I don't have the complete information on that building, and I'd ask them, their own staff, to do their own internal cost-benefit analysis.
I think an answer back, or a board motion, or maybe, and I, I'm on that board, I can help initiate that, but, I mean, I was on that board last year, we'll find out, but, so.
You're not getting out that easy.
It's an exciting board.
I just want, I just want to say, Jerry's indicating, we're getting close to finalizing concept, so I did explain to the Board of Public Works that the numbers that we have are rough numbers early on, and that as Nate indicated, we would, whatever their percentage of that building is, we cost it out, and we amortize their payment over the course of a 20- to 30-year lease. That's all the information we can share with them right now, because we're, we have not developed that budget yet.
Has the Board of Public Works ever asked to move Welch Court storage to a new county storage facility?
No.
And, and to be clear, Welch, like if, if, if Board of Public Works gives up Welch Court, that's not our property, right? That's their property.
That's their property.
And they are fee-funded as opposed to a tax-funded entity, right?
That's correct.
Well, taxes from the township level as opposed to.
They're, well.
They're, they're, we'll use the term self-supporting.
I mean, those are fees, though, they're not taxes. They're based on, they're on a, on a cost-of-service basis, not a, not a value of, of property basis.
Well, I'm sorry. Anyone else?
I mean, I think the default should be not including them, since they've never asked, they've never indicated. It sounds like it would be a big step for Board of Public Works to agree to committing to a new, a whole new building with new finances, with a significant change, instead of the reverse, where it sounds like we've been moving forward mostly as if they are going to be there. And, and I think this project is complicated enough as it is with dispatch paying for part of it, to have a third, and a contingent third party that doesn't seem to, has never expressed an interest in doing it, makes it that much more complicated to move this project forward, in my perspective.
I guess I'd like to give them an opportunity at, in an official capacity at their next board meeting to, I mean, has it been on an agenda item for a board meeting? And they have not, what was the outcome?
Well, I think both times was, they were, the time I spoke with them, they were focused on the rate structure, what would that look like? And of course, we can talk at a high level, with, you know, how Chris characterized it as accurate, that you're going to pay a percentage of the building, and it's going to be amortized over 25, 30 years while we have, if we have a bond opening. And I think it was just, it was, it was too much at that given meeting in December, and then Chris presented again in last week, and it just, there was just additional questions. There was no commitment, like that's a good idea, or that's not a good idea, there was just discussion. So at some point in time, we're going to have to make a decision and move, and I think that we have another month, if they can meet in the first part of the month, Commissioner Nelson, is that when they meet?
Yeah, more toward the end of the month, but there is one thing I want to, I want to state, we've, we've, the, the director of the DPW died suddenly, and there's an interim director in place right now, with a new director has been hired. So there, there is that, there's a kind of a gap right now that makes it hard to make more long-term capital type decisions. So depending on our timeline, if we have to move forward or not, if, if this could be delayed a little bit, if, if not, then we have to move forward. But I, I think it'd be, it's a tough time to ask the DPW to make that kind of long-term plan at this point.
Well, I think it's reasonable to ask them for a level of commitment, yes or no?
I do too.
And I, and I think it's reasonable to give them a little bit of time. I'd like to see options, Jerry. I'd like to see, including them, what's the plan looks like, and the cost, cost for that, and without them. Not a problem. So we can pick A if they're in, we're going to pick B if they're out. That seem to be everybody's?
Yeah, unless, if, if, if in the next three months, we really need a go or no-go on this, then I think we, we're not going to get that kind of commitment from the DPW at this point, so.
Then we should no-go, right? Because we can't sit on this for three months.
I don't know the answer to that question.
We can work the plan either way. It's not going to hold us up for preparing the budget estimate.
So I'll make the motion that this board requests the Board of Public Works to make a commitment, or in the next, at their next meeting, at least a preliminary commitment for planning purposes for Project Alpha, for the storage components of Project Alpha.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion on the table.
So it's only at this next meeting can this happen?
I mean, they've had it on their agenda, two meetings in a row. How many meetings do they need to have?
Well, I, I explained, there's a, there's a situation here in.
I would like to make a friendly amendment, let's split the difference between 30 and 90 days and make it next, in 60 days. By the end, what's it, is there, they got a meeting at the end of January? They have a meeting at the end of February?
And I, I have to look at this calendar, but yes, I think it's the third week.
Isn't it the second Thursday of each month?
I can't remember if it's, let me look back in my calendar, because I don't have a new.
I don't have it either.
It's, yeah, it looks like it's the second, so like the next, yeah, I would, meeting for tomorrow, I don't have it on my calendar, so I would prefer to have a little longer window. I think it's, and, and obviously the packet, if it's this week, is out already.
Right.
So.
If I could add, add some commentary to this, there is also a secondary issue with, obviously, we have a good relationship with the Board of Public Works, but they are a board in and of itself. The county has no real statutory authority over the Board of Public Works, so understand what that relationship may look like if they are a tenant in one of our facilities. Just something for you to consider as you go through this, both Commissioner Nelson, if you are on the Board of Public Works at that capacity and at this board. Jerry, when, when is the break-ground estimate?
We were looking at late summer, if everything proceeds and is approved by the board.
We're on a tight window.
We're ticking.
I, I'm not sure that this is, at this point, something we can squeeze in.
Commissioner Nelson is correct. We were in conversations with the previous DPW director, unfortunately, he passed away, so there was information gap, there was a timeline there that they were, and they still are, quite frankly, they're still trying to catch up, and so, in fairness to them, it's, it's a difficult time for them to make these decisions potentially.
Yeah, yeah.
But yes, we do need a decision.
I think as, as speaking for the board, I would say it's probably not a good time to be put on that short of a timeline. I think I'd rather be just go ahead without including the DPW, and I certainly can't speak for the entire board, but that's probably more what I'd be comfortable with than giving them a 30, 60, 90-day window.
I think the director.
That was the question, right?
That was the friendly amendment, is what we're discussing, right? Did you accept?
I mean, I originally said we, the default should be we go forward, and then there was pushback that, no, we shouldn't go forward without giving them the chance to make that commitment, so should we give them a chance?
And we had a discussion about what that timeline looks like.
Well, Seifert offered the friendly amendment, so we're waiting to hear if you accept it.
I don't accept the friendly amendment. I think giving them more time to not commit is not helpful to a deadline, so I think at most, I would give them till their February 13th meeting to commit, and if not, we move forward without it.
I just don't think, I just don't feel that's the time that.
So then you'll deny that we shouldn't give them anything, or we should just move forward without them? What do you think?
Can I, can I finish? I would, I would say that if it's, if it's that short of a timeline, you're, during the circumstances, it's, there's not enough time for them to make a good qualified decision, I don't think. You can certainly ask them to, as opposed to a board, board motion, how about we ask the board if they want to take this up, give them that opportunity, and give them the, the constraints of time, see how they want to react.
We've done that twice, right? Our board, our administration has gone to their board twice, they've never asked for this, they never, they never have said, we want this. We are creating, we are, we're trying to impose, you know, we're making them an offer, do you want this building? They've never said yes, ever. Now the question today is, do we, do we ask them again if they want it, or do we assume they don't want it?
I think we, I'm, I don't know, and maybe Commissioner Nelson can speak to this, because he's on the board, and has been at the meetings, I assume, or some of them anyway. Maybe they don't know the time element that could be involved? I mean, they, maybe they don't know the sense of urgency that we're, maybe they don't know the sense of urgency that we seem to all of a sudden be feeling about this project, which I don't really understand either. But maybe giving them at least a more formal motion, even though, to your point, they don't answer to us, but more formal motion to them, asking them for an answer by then, and they could respond to us if they need more time, and they want 30 days, and then we can consider that. But I, I just, I mean, I don't know what's being communicated to them, and maybe Commissioner Nelson can speak to that.
I could have a much better feel for this if just if I was allowed to have a conversation with the board chair, and I can report back to the board, or, but I understand that this board needs to kind of know where we're going or not, so.
Well, I don't necessarily, unless, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, or Nate, I don't know that we necessarily need to have a motion to say, hey, you guys got to put up or shut up. What I do believe is that we should move forward, and it's like, there's option A and there's option B. If DPW's in, it's option A, if they're, and if Darrell has a conversation at the next meeting, even though it's not on the agenda, they say, you know what? We just don't have the bandwidth for that right now, we don't want to hold you up, or we do, give us four or five weeks, we already have the drawings done, we can afford that to our partners, because they are, even though we have no oversight supposedly. So that's going to be my suggestion, is how we proceed forward. Need a motion for that?
So I'll withdraw my motion, which I can do at any time, I believe, under parliamentarian rules, and I will instead make the motion that this board proceed with an option A and an option B, including and excluding Board of Public Works, and unless Board of Public Works tells us affirmatively one way or the other, we're going to have to pick from those in 60, we will pick from those within 60 days, or, or when Cunningham Limp presents them. And maybe that's.
It's a better way to handle it.
And that shifts the burden on them, that we're going to move this forward, and unless they tell us they want in, frankly, they're going to be out, they're going to have to be.
Point of order, once a motion is on the floor, and it no longer belongs to the motion maker, it belongs to the board as a whole. maker, it belongs to the board as a whole, so what you'd want to do is clear the floor.
Thank you.
So, one thing a chair could do is say, if there's no objection, I'll clear the floor.
Okay.
And that's just a really fast way to clear the floor, to keep the meeting moving.
Is that because it was seconded?
Uh, once it's seconded and the, the chair states the motion, it becomes a motion of the board.
And I did do that, so.
I got a thumbs up from attorney, so.
Did you say that?
Thanks, Matt. So if there's not an objection, we'll clear the floor.
We have to vote to clear the floor?
No. You do by consensus, just keep the meeting moving.
No objections and we move forward.
Right, so now to your new motion?
New motion, I'll try to restate it, that we're going to ask, we're asking Cunningham Lim to present us options. A, including Board of Public Works storage, B, without, and we'll proceed and pick between them unless the Board of Public Works lets us know that they want storage through formal action.
Got that, Bonnie? Second?
Aye.
Mr. McCallister, seconds. Do I need a roll call that, Rob?
Nope.
We're not spending any money.
Just take discussion.
Any further discussion? Wait, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Fantastic, the motion passes. So, before we go to unfinished business, I'm going to call for a break unless there's somebody that doesn't like that idea.
Sounds good.
Wait, 10 minutes?
Sounds good.
Move on with our unfinished business, 10A. So, assignments. Relatively new at that, at this, as everybody can tell. So, I tried to reach out to everybody and keep their wishes. And I know some people wanted to trade some things and do things like that. And so, I just got a list here to read off, so we can just... I'm sorry, go right ahead. Wait a minute?
No. You...go ahead.
Okay. So, there wasn't a lot of changes. I mean, there were some vacancies. And obviously, Commissioner Spence being new here, our predecessor. So, just going to go alphabetically. The Area Agency on Aging is Commissioner Walter. The Beta Board is myself. The Board of Public Works is Commissioner Nelson. The Brownfield Redevelopment Authority is myself. The Building Code of Appeals is Commissioner Andrews. Commission on Aging Advisory Boards, Commissioner Walter. Community Corrections is Commissioner Nelson. Is that still a thing?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Remember one time you said it was...
Oh, that's the other one, Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee.
Thank you. That's not even on our list anymore. Good. So, Department of Health and Human Services Boards, Commissioner Morris. Department of Health and Human Services Pavilions Boards, Commissioner Andrews. Economic Development Corporation is still Commissioner McAllister and Commissioner Flynn. Emergency Management, the LEPC, is going to be Commissioner Andrews. As is Farmland Preservation, is Commissioner Andrews. Grand Traverse Central Dispatch will be Commissioner Spence. Land Bank Authority is myself. Emergency Management Planning Team is myself. Materials Management Planning Committee is Commissioner Andrews. Networks Northwest is Commissioner Flynn. Northern Nexus is also Commissioner Flynn. Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Authority is Commissioner Morris. Northern Michigan Community Action Agency is now Commissioner Spence. Commissioner Walter wanted to let her have that. Is that correct? Thank you very much. Northwest Regional Airport Authority is Commissioner Henshaw and Commissioner Nelson. Parks and Rec Commission is going to be Commissioner McAllister. If you recall, Commissioner McAllister had to have some personal time. And so, Commissioner Nelson was very thoughtful in taking the reins on that. And so, that I asked Commissioner Nelson to be kind of an unofficial alternate for that, so he can get Commissioner McAllister up to speed, so they can help each other out on that. As you know, I got a big lift today, and he agreed to that. I appreciate that.
Could I be an official alternate, so that I can vote? That way, only one of us have been voting.
I don't think that's allowed yet, but we'll get Matt's opinion on that.
All right.
Where was I? Parks and Rec, excuse me. The Traverse Transportation Courting Initiate is going to be Commissioner Flynn. Veterans Fairs is Commissioner McAllister. Commissioner Flynn was gracious enough to give that up. And then, you know, we have the NMRE, but that's a civilian appointee.
Community Collaborative?
Pardon me?
The Community Collaborative, is that...
It doesn't exist. It hasn't been for years.
Gone, okay.
Although the meetings are still on the...
Yes, ma'am.
Can you make sure you get me that list, and I can make sure Lisa gets it too?
Sorry, go ahead. I'll get to it.
Yes.
And Matt will correct us if I'm wrong, but it turns out that our statutory boards have a statutory term that takes precedence over this board's practice of appointing or making assignments for a one-year term. And on that basis, things get very complicated very quickly, because different people were appointed at different times to different boards for different term lengths per Michigan law. And as a result, as some on this board know, for example, Commissioner Morris sits on CMH, and that's a three-year term board. Now, she's been on it, I believe, for four years. This will be her fifth year on it. So, when her term began and when her term expires, seems like an open question. But as it stands today, she's not eligible for reappointment, because she's on a longer term than that. And that applies to multiple of these boards. The Airport Board, the Parks and Rec Boards are statutory, the CMH Board is statutory. Others on the list are statutory. As I understand it, and our attorney will correct us if I'm wrong, we...the chair has the opportunity to appoint liaisons, terms that are expired, when they expire. And then, there are some that, frankly, I don't think we know, based on the way they're presented in the online, whether they are...have a specific term in the bylaws of that board, like, for example, the Area Agency on Aging. I don't have any information about...if that's a statutory board, and if it is, how much...how long the term is, that's not online, it's not public. Sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Henshaw.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the chairman's appointments as presented.
Support. I have a motion to approve my appointments as presented by Commissioner Henshaw, in support by Commissioner Nelson. Any discussion?
Yep. I think we get into a legal question when we make appointments to boards that are already appointed. Are we making those new terms, or are we extending them? And on advice of counsel, I would recommend that instead of making all of the appointments, that the motion should be, this board's action should be, to appoint the non-statutory boards, the expired boards, on the one-year terms. Because otherwise, we're making a messy situation even messier, which is, how long are the terms of people who are on boards with statutory terms? When were they appointed? Are they being reappointed today?
I...this is the way the board has always done this. There's no need to make this unnecessarily complicated. It has been acknowledged, it's been an issue 15, 20 years ago, that if this board tries to make an appointment that is not concurrent with statutory law, statutory law obviously takes precedent. But there's no reason to pick through every little thing and say, "This is legal, this is not." We can do this with a blanket motion. Every Board of Commissioners has done that since 1970, and we can move on with county business.
And with due respect, that's part of the reason this is messy. There was an understanding that everyone got to pick which board they want, and it turns out that that's not the case, because of the statutory limits on boards. So, trying to get some clarity where there has been blanket motions with no list, with no official record of who was appointed to which board when, does not help us comply with the law and provide transparency to the community, who's on which board, for how long, and when are they up for reappointment. That's a pretty standard thing that boards do. Who's on which board, for how long, and when are their terms up? That's information that this board should have, and particularly the chair, who's responsible for reappointing them.
Whose responsibility is it to keep track of that? I mean, is that administration? Is it the clerk's office? Is it...
Lisa and I worked together on that. I do have a document that shows which committees have commissioners appointed as part of voting members. And it'll say Airport Commission, three years, Beta Board, three years. We keep track of, for example, Commissioner Morris, her term expired 3/31/24, and on 1/3/24, she got...she was appointed by Chairman Henshaw. So, that was now another three-year appointment. So, it doesn't end until 3/31/27. If somebody else took...if somebody else was appointed in that place, we would switch it and say that they filled a vacancy, and that would end 3/31/27.
That's...that is helpful, but it doesn't fully answer the question, because those organizational meetings are when the motion indicates is the start of the term. And when it's a multi-year term, it doesn't identify if that was the middle of the term or the beginning of the term. So, there are boards, for example, McAllister was appointed to the Parks Board, and his term expired at the end of 2024. But then, apparently, Commissioner Nelson was put in that temporarily, and there's no record of that.
I have...
It's in the minutes.
I have record of that.
It's not in the minutes. I couldn't find it in the minutes. Do you remember when that was?
The summer, I think it was.
Let me see if I can find it.
I mean, I remember voting on that anyway.
I can't.
I couldn't find it in the minutes.
I'll ask a question.
Yeah, I can't answer without...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Henshaw.
I move to call the question.
All right. So, we're...Mr. Henshaw, moved, call the question, call for a vote on this motion that they made.
It's not...that's a call to vote, right?
So, there's no discussion on this motion? You simply take a roll call vote? If the majority says yes, we end debate and vote on the main motion. If the majority says no, we continue debate.
My apologies. Thank you for the clarification on that, Commissioner Henshaw. Are you clear on that, Bonnie?
Right now, we're just going to do a roll call vote on calling the question.
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Flynn?
No.
Andrews?
No.
Walter?
No.
Spence?
No.
Seifert?
No.
Motion failed.
So, as I present this, and we talk about this, it is my understanding that those that can be appointed by the chair for the next year are those to be appointed. There are terms, like Beta Board, my term is not up until the end of 2026. I'm not appointing myself past 2026. I'm appointing myself to continue on in my term. People can be removed from their terms, but it's an honorous task, and these things through authorities, and that's not what I'm advocating.
Is that even necessary?
Nor was I trying to suggest that I'm going to continue...I'm going to pick on Commissioner Henshaw, because he's so helpful for me, I know he wouldn't mind. And I'm saying, hey, Commissioner Henshaw, your term on Northwest Regional Airport Authority ends on 12/31/26, according to the records. I'm not saying, hey, he's going to stay on there until it's a three-year term. Am I not right? Am I correct? So, I'm saying, by today, I'm like, hey, I'm going to nominate you, or I'm going to say you and Nelson. I'm not saying that you're going to be on there until 2029. And if...
Continuing.
And with the original motion, let me finish. And I would like to hear from Matt, saying that that's my proposal, and if the law supports that, that we're going to do that. I really don't care what they did in 1970. There's a lot of things they did in 1970 they don't do anymore.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that particular one? I understood Mr. Henshaw appointed...Chair Henshaw at the time appointed himself to the Airport Board in 2023, effective at the organizational meeting on January 3rd, I believe it was, maybe it was the 4th, 2023. And if that's a three-year term, then that should expire at the end of 2025, not at the end of 2026, right?
I don't know about that.
What's...well, Penny's term...
Matt?
Well, that's the question. When did it start?
Go ahead, Matt. If you have something, it's the chair.
My only comment on this is that I would like to at least understand what we have in our records, from either the statute or the bylaws. Not every statutory board includes language in the statute saying how long the term should be. Some do. So, the order of precedence is what the law says, what the bylaws say, and then the final is what the board's motion is. So, a board motion would not necessarily change...you couldn't. You wouldn't legally change what those appointment terms are. You could do it voluntarily. So, if everybody consents to this, people could effectively be resigning and then being replaced on boards. I think that is a little bit of a complicating issue. That is an option. I think, from my perspective, what the motion is on the floor is appropriate. Let us do some due diligence to try to get a consistent process, as far as what we understand the terms to be. Make sure we understand what these appointing motions mean. And when we identify a vacancy, that gets presented to the board to fill at the time it becomes vacant, typically before it becomes vacant. It's okay if it happens after it becomes vacant, too.
So, to recap, my...for myself, mostly, is that Commissioner Henshaw's motion is appropriate, and is not setting any kind of strange, long-distance, decade-long terms. I mean, it's because it has historically been, we're talking about for right now, they're continuing on, for whatever the terms are set in their authority, we're not extending that. Is that correct?
Yes.
What is the motion?
Would you care to restate that?
To approve the chairman's recommendations as presented.
Well, and some of those, it doesn't seem that we even need to approve it, if it's statutory and they continue anyway, like Commissioner Morris's term, for example, on the CMH Board. We don't need to make the motion to approve her again. It already was approved that she was in a three-year term, correct?
That is correct. But to Commissioner Andrews' point, I have four different pieces of paper, with four different sets of names on it, with four numbered dates. And it's like, and we got to get on with getting on, we have county business due, and I'm not very happy about that. And that'd be something that Matt there says, like, we're going to look at that, we're going to finish that, get that process a little more finely keened. But he's also stating, in my opinion, or his opinion, that we can move forward with my recommendation, and it won't have any kind of detrimental effects or what have you.
I don't know that he said that.
What is your recommendation?
My recommendation is what I stated, is that we continue on the people that are already on their terms, for the authorities that they're in, whether it be Beta, Public Works, the airport, Community Mental Health, that they're going to continue on for the remainder of the term, that's for...as it's set for its two years, three years, whatever it is. We're not reappointing for a future vacant term, three years. And the boards that are annual, or that have been expired, like Parks and Rec, those are. Do you want me to reread them all again?
No, I don't...I don't need the list. I just want to make sure we're clear, that we're not extending or reappointing, we're just continuing, except where there's openings.
Correct.
It might be clearer if we just remove those statutory boards from your list.
I don't think we need to. It doesn't change that. I mean, it just...we're just reaffirming, we're moving forward. It's a...anyone that, like, right now, I was not maybe on the DPW Board, I'm getting reappointed at this point, moving forward. On the NRAA Board, this board actually voted on December 4th to have me extend a new term, so there wasn't a gap. So, I don't...I don't see how this conflicts with that. It's...it's more of a punctuality... I'm going to split the baby. All right. Here's my recommendation.
We have a motion.
There's already an motion on the floor.
All right. Well, there's no more discussion, I guess we're going to vote on it. Roll call vote, Bonnie, if you please.
Morris?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Andrews?
No.
Walter?
No.
Spence?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes. Motion carries.
We're still assuming that Matt is...you're still on, right, Matt? That you're going to come back with some more clarification? We might have to undo some things?
I don't think we'll have to undo anything. What I want to do is just make sure that I work with the folks on the county side to make...to identify the list of what we have for terms. So, to answer the earlier question, what we're doing today, even if we did take action that was basically restating something that was already present, that's harmless, from my perspective. What I just want to make sure is that we all know what these things are going forward.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. So, 10B. Nate, I think you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We were directed to come back to you with a recommendation for a work group to discuss how we receive and grant funding from the cannabis funds and the opioid funds. So, our recommendation would be that the administrator, deputy administrator, finance director, civil counsel, and two commissioners be part of that working group to set the process.
Question and questions for Nate?
I would also like to add that you heard from Dr. McGram earlier this morning at public comment. He has requested through email to me to be included in any discussion about opioid task force dollars, as has Mr. Friedman, who is in the audience today.
So, go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner Nelson. My apologies. I feel like unintentionally, we have somewhat disrespected the work of that committee. And I don't mean to say that we intentionally did that or anything, but I think we owe the community and that committee to be very deliberate about the expense of this fund. We need a process. I've been kind of consistent on that, that I think we need a process for a lot of that funding request, and I have some ideas on that. But I'm very much in favor of formalizing this process and moving forward. And I believe, Commissioner Flynn, you served on that board, too, so I'd welcome your input, your thoughts. But I do like the involvement of the two citizens in our audience that were involved as well. I think that's a good idea.
Commissioner Walter?
So, to clarify, the purpose of the work group, and I made this motion, so it feels like it's getting mixed up. We're not...the purpose of the work group is to be clear on a process, or bring back to the board a process for how we might approach spending current and future opioid and cannabis funds. And I believe there's some other funds that are out there that we need to be more clear on the process. Now, the idea of it wasn't to replace the work of the opioid task force, or to denigrate the work that was done. We still, I agree with the commenter, that we still do need that study session. We still do need the strategic plan presentation. That is separate from this work group. This work group is about creating a process for reviewing and spending the funds. I see at a certain point, I mean, we might get together once or twice to figure out a process that we want to propose to the board to consider for how we might go about it. The work group is not going to come back with recommendations on what to spend the money on. That's not the point of the work group. The point of the work group is to come up with a process for how we might go about doing that. And so, just to clarify, I'm still expecting that the committee will bring that back, and we will still see a presentation from either Sarah Bannon, which I still am assuming she...I thought it was in the contract, she would be coming back to give us a final presentation on the final strategic plan on that. And then, we can move forward with board action on how to spend those monies, based on a process we all can agree on. So, that's my understanding of what we're doing here. I just want to clarify.
Commissioner Flynn?
That was always my understanding as well, that we would still...we were still planning on having a study session with the opioid task force presentation. But we have had opportunities where someone has come up and asked for money without a process of approving that. So, this is what I was understanding the work group's plan was. I think we've all mentioned at some point, that we do need a process in...
So, specific to the opioid dollars, a criteria could very well be, have you considered the task force ultimate recommendations that came out of that group? And it's a simple criteria that we can employ as a work group to discuss how we are going to spend dollars.
So, my recommendation, seeing that nobody's jumping all over themselves, is be part of this group. Commissioner Walters and Commissioner Nelson would be the most vocal of support of acts of creating a process. I'm going to recommend that both of you be on that work group. If you would please.
Happy to do that. I would say I wasn't the most vocal in being annoyed about not having a process. I was annoyed that people who were annoyed about it were not making a motion to create any process. So, I'm happy to serve on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Walters. Commissioner Nelson?
I would agree to serve on that role. That's where I can best serve, and serve with Commissioner Walters, who is annoyed at the annoyance.
It's true.
And we're going to take care of that annoyance. Thank you very much for your time.
No guarantees, there will be no more annoyance.
Duly noted.
Bring it.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I don't believe so.
I think we do.
You think we do?
If you're forming an ad hoc, you need the motion.
It's not ad hoc, it's a work group, but it's a work group.
Well, in effect, under Open Meetings Act, it's still going to be a committee of the board.
Yeah, and...
They're deliberating toward decisions that we'll make, so it has to be an open meeting.
So, you've appointed...tell me who you're requesting, or who you're recommending appointment again?
Commissioner Nelson and Commissioner Walter.
How about the...we could...
Oh, I'm sorry, there's other people involved here.
Administrator, deputy administrator, finance director, civil counsel.
I make the motion that we create the work group as recommended by the administrator with the appointment of Commissioners Walter and Nelson.
Second.
Third.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Andrews, and seconded by Commissioner Flynn. Do we need a roll call vote? I don't think so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would invite our two citizens in the audience today who have requested involvement to please attend the meetings, and we'd welcome your input.
I'm going to guess there's no nays on that. I concur with him. You're all right. You're ahead of the game. He's all right, and I appreciate that. I would also reiterate that invitation. Please do join.
To Commissioner Nelson's point, these will be open to anybody in the public, also, who would like to go, from my understanding.
Fantastic. Moving right along. New business.
None that we have.
Seeing that there is none, we're going to go to 12, Commissioner or Department Reports. Commissioner Nelson?
So, I have an exciting bit of news. There was a press conference this morning at 9:30, and Traverse City Airport has announced a seventh carrier coming to our area. It's JetBlue. JetBlue is based out of New York City. They have a lot of East Coast presence, down to the south, but they will be flying Thursday, Saturday, and Sunday, from June 5th to October 26th, this first year, to Boston Logan. And that opens up East Coast, up and down, even down into the Caribbean. So, generally, when these new airlines come on board, this is a big deal, to get a new airline to come to Traverse City. When you look at what's happening in the industry, there's a lot of retraction. But they start out, and then, like what's happening with Denver, they're kind of extending the season, shoulder seasons, even longer. So, hopefully, that happens. So, I encourage everyone to take a trip to Boston, out of Traverse City.
Boston, there you go. Commissioner Morris?
So, as you know, sometimes it takes a little while for information to reach a board. You saw the story that came out in today's paper. We've known that this information was coming, but up until recently, our Northern Lakes Board had not seen the results of the audit ordered by the NMRE from Raymond Group. It will be presented tomorrow in reports to our Northern Lakes Board. It's my sense that we will probably need to call a special meeting with council and representatives from Raymond to fully disseminate the information. But I apologize to this board that the information came out in the press before I was able to get it to you. Sometimes it just happens that way. Nobody needs a gut punch, so...anyway, it will be handled, and I appreciate the fact that our governance model now, on the Northern Lakes Board, will prevent these types of things from happening in the future, because we were not able, under the former governance model, to be able to have a hands-on approach to the inner workings of the organization. We now do. We will be more transparent going forward, and we will have our hands in it. So, it's a work in progress. We're headed in the right direction.
Thank you for perseverance on that, Penny. When is the...is there an expected date when they're going to have the deep dive into the audit?
We'll talk about that tomorrow at our Northern Lakes Board meeting. It will be in Cadillac at 1:00 PM.
Thank you. Commissioner Henshaw?
I just want to take a second to commend Commissioner Morris for long endurance on that board. At one point, this board was ready to break off Grand Traverse County from Northern Lakes because of the lack of accountability and perceived bad behaviors, which this report is now confirming, bad behaviors. And a lot of people on this board took criticism for making that decision, and it was a tough stand, and Commissioner Morris was at the center of it, and she was stalwart in her resolve, and it...she was right. So, I just want to thank her for sticking out, doing what she knew was right at the time.
Amen.
I appreciate that.
Commissioner Morris?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I just want to make clear for the record, at this point, it is my understanding that the assertions in the audit are allegations. They have not been proven. There will be a potential legal action, and that legal act, you know, at this point, There will be a potential legal action and that legal act, you know, at this point, those are not proven facts. They are allegations by one auditor.
So we're not going to ask anyone to resign?
I, I, I'm, I did have a couple of updates. One is that the, as most know, the Pavilions has lost its director. It is going through, it will be going through a hiring process coming up in the next couple of months. Luckily, they've done this recently before and they kind of know how to go through it. I guess silver linings, right? And the other update is that if anybody has a basement in your house, there are free, there are $5 or free radon tests at the health department. Radon is the second greatest cause of lung cancer. It is, which is a deadly disease. It is easy to test your house. Those tests are, you just go to the environmental health department. If you bring canned food, it's free through the rest of January. And I encourage not just our board members to keep your family safe, but everybody in the community to please go get a radon test for your home.
I think we were going down the line here and it got skipped.
We were. So, Commissioner Hansel, it's your turn.
I have my piece, thank you.
Thank you. To Mr. McAllister.
I'm good.
Commissioner Walter?
Yeah, I wanted to bring this up earlier, but I'll just bring it up now in Department Reports. I would like to make the motion that we have a study session and bring Sarah Bannon back to have a strategic plan discussion on the opioid task force by the middle of March.
Second.
Sorry, we have a motion by Commissioner Walter, seconded by Commissioner Flynn to bring Sarah Bannon back to a study session. Talk about the opioid task force strategic plan. Commissioner Hansel?
Did we not just form an ad hoc committee?
We did.
Okay.
Those are two different things again, to reiterate.
Please.
Yeah, I don't understand the difference. I'm sorry.
Okay, so the motion that we all agreed on was a work group to discuss the process for spending money, not what we're going to spend the money on. We still need to know the information from the task force. So they are two things that need to happen. One doesn't need to happen before the other.
The task force has never had a chance to present their findings in their year-long work that they did.
The work group is not tasked with coming back with what we're spending the money on. That's not the task of the work group.
My apologies, I was checking to make sure that we didn't have to pay her to come back.
I mean, that's part of her contract, correct?
It is, that's what I was checking, so. I concur that I think that was the whole point of having the work committee, but it is a motion. We'll get a vote on it.
The working group would not present the task force's work to this board. There's no scenario where the work group comes to this board and says, here's the gaps analysis that Sarah Bannon compiled over the course of a year with the task force's input. That's just not an output of the work group. That is something we've never seen. We paid $17,000 for Sarah Bannon to come back to this board, this board that passed, and we've not seen that yet.
That's true. Full value. Any more comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Nelson.
So, I want to ask Commissioner Walter if we, does it make sense for us to meet prior to hearing from Ms. Bannon on this issue?
I don't see that it matters, but I'm assuming we, I don't know what the timing will be when we can get her to come back, but the discussion on process is separate than a discussion on what we're spending the money on.
I believe that she would give insight to helpful of the process, the opioid. I would imagine you guys would meet in your work committee after she presents. That would be what I would suggest.
The presentation would contain what the task force sees as priorities as spending. The process would be when we hear what the priorities are, if we have a process in place, entities or nonprofits or community members could then follow the process to apply to receive opioid money. So it's two separate things.
As a matter of discussion, I would like to ask the chair if he would also appoint Commissioner Flynn to this committee to help because she was on that, I mean, the ad hoc that we created a few minutes ago to help with this process because I don't want to have two different things going two different directions here and I want to...
I'd be happy to.
I want to connect them and her expertise and experience would be helpful, I think.
So done.
Well, we've got a motion on the table...
I know, I understand that.
...to have an opioid task force presentation by Sarah Bannon by mid-March.
Understand that.
Yep.
We can't change a motion we passed three motions ago by...
It's true, we cannot.
I just asked a question.
Let's do the...
So, we have a motion on the floor. Is any more discussion? Roll call vote, please, Bonnie.
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Spence?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the chairman's recommendation of adding Commissioner Flynn to the opioid work group.
Support. Thank you. Commissioner Hansel made a motion. Commissioner Nelson, support. Did you get that, Bonnie?
Yes. Friendly amendment to not have, well, it hasn't been seconded, but I don't think it should be called, I don't think it should be called the opioid work group. It's confusing people. It's not about, it's about the process for spending these kind of extra dollars that are coming in.
Process work group.
Thank you.
Process work group.
Welcome.
Sounds good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Roll call vote, please, Bonnie.
Henchel?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Andrews?
No.
Walter?
Yes.
Spence?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Any more Department or Commissioner reports?
I have a couple of things. First, we, as you are aware, we are hosting recess this year and we hosted at the airport last week and Commissioners Andrews, Nelson, Morris, Henchel, and Flynn were in attendance. Thank you very much for coming to that. The next one is at the workshop and it's going to be themed a grand place to work where our HR Director and some of our department heads will actually present opportunities for employment with Grand Traverse County as part of our task number two under the strategic plan for finding new ways to retain and get and retain staff.
Did you say the date on that?
It's on a Wednesday. It's the first Wednesday of the month, I believe, Commissioner Flynn, if that's, because it does interfere directly with, it's on the same day as a board meeting, so.
That would be the 5th.
The 5th of February, correct.
So, those are $10 to attend. Is there any way that county employees or potential county employees can get a pass to go to those for free since we're, taxpayers are paying the alcohol bill?
They're not paying the alcohol bill.
What does our $13,000 go to?
Essentially, it's media coverage and sponsorship throughout. The TCE ticker, the business news, radio, things like that.
My understanding is the ticket price covers somebody's drink.
So we, it does not. You have to pay for that directly, but we have five, we can take five people for, we have five spaces.
The people at the bar sponsor.
What time is it?
Five o'clock.
Whoever's hosting it.
It is five to six thirty, yes.
That's their sponsorship.
It's from 5:00 to 6:30. Mr. Bot and I met with the airport yesterday with their council, our council, and we had a very, very good discussion. And ultimately, there's no real issues there. Mr. Swets is going to prepare a memo to us after, is it Miller Canfield, that is going to prepare a document for the airport authority to present to them first for their review and approval, and then that document will come to you for your review and approval and we will start beginning discussions about what that agreement looks like. But essentially, there were no discussions or concerns about what we discussed in closed session in terms of terms for that bonding initiative. We have a study session next week to review a funding request from Safe Harbor, the septic ordinance, a legal update. That would include just open forum discussion about our current status of lawsuits and an ethics recommendation that Mr. North Short is working on. Correct?
Correct.
That's all I have.
Anyone else? Anyone over here? Move on to second public comment. Bonnie, if you please.
The rules are always the same for the second public comment.
Thank you. Hi, Dave Friedman. I just wanted to say thank you for moving the opioid issue forward. We've worked on it hard and we would like to see the money on the street to help people in need and adding the marijuana tax information as well because the process is really important, in my opinion, to get the dollars out to the right places where they need to be as opposed to an individual decision of one person or another saying, this is how it's done. I know it's your final responsibility, but I'll be glad to help. So thank you. In addition to that, I am also member of the Northern Lakes Board, having some concerns as well. The article in the paper, I believe, came out somewhat prematurely because the Northern Lakes, the Northern NMRE has not approved that in their full board, I don't believe. It was a, but it has to be approved by them. However, I don't think it's going to change. The board of Northern Lakes, including myself, who's on that board, are really concerned about it and I know we're going to take a deep dive tomorrow and I'm assuming there'll be additional meetings to rectify the problems that we've seen. I've been a board member maybe for a year plus, whatever, and it was a long learning curve. It's very different than other boards I've served on. So, anyway, I'm glad to serve and I thank you for doing what seems to be right for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. My sentiment, Justin Reed, my sentiment is, I was on that board in 2022 and I was accused of being the former CEO, not Brian Martinez, but the other CEO at that time, and that never happened. And I guess, you know, things that never happen, you know, always show up. But, you know, you cannot pat yourself on the back because since then, of me not becoming on the board of directors, I went ahead and I also had services through the Integrate Health Clinic. And within one meeting, it was determined that, well, you know, we've got this audit, we can't think of any alternatives, and that went away. So, but hopefully with this wellness clinic, this, not wellness clinic, but this crisis center, hopefully it does not have the same fate as the same thing that happened in the Integrate Health Clinic. Maybe that we can learn from steps from that. So if this fails, we can go ahead and we can look at the county and say, it was the county's fault.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Carlton Ketchum, Traverse City. Commissioner Morris mentioned the board meeting is tomorrow. It's in Cadillac, but fortunately, the Northern Lakes Board allows you to attend virtually and they also allow you to make public comment virtually. And if you go to the Northern Lakes website, northernlakescmh.org, and go to the About Us page and Board of Directors, you'll scroll down and you will see that there is a link to attend and offer public comment at this meeting. I think that's a wonderful thing that the board has done and I encourage those in the audience, whether here or online, those that are concerned. I hope the Record Eagle will issue a notification of this because a lot of people are concerned about the goings on and it would be very beneficial for a little more citizen sunshine to be shining upon the board. So, thank you very much. NorthernLakesCMH.org, About Us, Board of Directors, and you'll find the link. Log in a few minutes early because it's, I think, Microsoft Meet, which some people don't always have that technology, but it works great once you get in. Thank you.
Saying no further public comment. No one wants, going twice. All right, so now we are going to a closed session.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I have a notice.
Yep. My apologies, thank you.
I just wanted to remind everybody, this is our last meeting for this month, so at the end of the month, two weeks from Friday, is the Travers Connect Gala, which several of the Commissioners have attended and staff have attended in the past and it's always been a great community event.
Thank you.
They have a study session next week though, right?
Yep.
Oh, that's true.
We won't be taking no action then. Saying nothing else.
I would like to, one more notice for the Commissioners and those listening, the county offices will be closed on Monday and Observations Martin Luther King Day and we will be training staff on that, on that day. So county offices are closed.
Need a motion to go in closed session?
Yep.
Need a motion?
Well, first, I just want to comment that the packet was updated to include some public information about what we're going into closed session to discuss. There were some questions about what is an EOP and I want to acknowledge Mr. Byrd, who has created a very concise, bulleted FAQ about what is the EOP and you might have missed that because it was only added later after the pack was originally published, but it also, if you don't refresh, it may not be obvious to you that it's there. So, it's a glitch in our, in our technology. With that, I'll make the motion to go into closed session to consider an update to the County Emergency Operations Plan, which includes materials exempt from discussion or disclosure under MCL 15.243U as permitted by MCL 15.2681H. Second.
I have to roll call that, do I?
Yep.
Of course.
Two thirds.
Roll call, please.
Henchel?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Spence?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes.
Sweet C and five.
Where are we going?[1533.63]
Yeah.
Not yet.
You'll need five.
That's what I was thinking, but I thought it'd be.
All right, I'll try to do that right away.
Ready, Bonnie?
I am.
Motion's come out, closed session.
So moved?
Support. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Chair, at this point I would move to approve the adoption of the 2025 Grand Travers County Emergency Operations Plan and assign the.
Thank you.
Your, uh, your honor.
Easy, easy. Don't let that go to his head.
At this point I would move to approve the adoption of the 2025 Grand Travers County Emergency Operations Plan and assign the Board of Commissioners chair to sign the promulgation document.
Second.
Sweet, we have a motion by Commissioner Andrews, second by Commissioner Anshel. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Last call, anyone? We are adjourned.